I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barron.
Here.
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavell.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan. Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the recommended action is entering closed session, and the recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, probable or imminent litigation against, affecting, or on behalf of the public body, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, matter pertaining to an individual student, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? A roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan. Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Good evening. The recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Here.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That will take us to our recognitions, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Small.
Thank you. Will Mr. Eric Winkowski please come forward as the Director of Athletics and Activities and begin the introduction of the wonderful students I hear behind me, having a bunch of excitement back there?
Board of Education and Dr. Small, thank you for taking some time to honor a virtual cornucopia of talented students tonight. Tonight we'll recognize some talented musicians, budding scientists, award-winning journalists, and standout members of the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. Here tonight to help me honor their students are Palatine Principal Tony Medina and Assistant Principal Kim Glazer, Fremd Principal Mark Langer and Assistant Principal Mandy Hughes, and Conan High School Principal Julie Novak. Guests of the students, please stand and be recognized with your student as the sponsor introduces them. So we'll get started with Fremd Band. Matthew Moore is in his 23rd year as a Director of Bands at Fremd High School. Matt has earned three music degrees from Northern Illinois, and Mr. Moore's bands have won numerous state honors, including the students we're recognizing tonight. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Winkowski. Good evening, Dr. Small, President Klimkowitz, and School Board members. I'm honored tonight to have the opportunity to recognize 45 of our outstanding students from the Fremd Wind Symphony, which is our premier concert band at FHS. Unfortunately, 10 members from the ensemble are not able to attend tonight due to prior school, sports, or family commitments. We are being honored tonight for our selection and performance at last January's Illinois Music Education Association's All-State Conference. The band was one of five high school concert bands selected from the state to have a featured concert at the three-day conference. We were selected by a committee of collegiate band directors from submitted recordings, letters of recommendation from other band directors, and concert programs. All bands were selected nominously where the identification was taken off. Our band was challenged with exceptional band compositions at the collegiate and professional level. In addition to our daily rehearsals, the students put in countless hours of individual preparation for the five chosen pieces. Our band had the opportunity to perform in an exceptional concert hall full of high school collegiate music educators, college students, and numerous band families that traveled to Peoria. The students performed exceptionally, resulting in an immediate standing ovation from the audience. Personally, this concert performance was one of the highlights of my 23 years at Fremd and something I will forever treasure. Thank you to my wonderful students. I'm confident that the students also cherish this performance. They were actually beaming with pride afterwards, and will enjoy listening to the recording for years from now. I'd also like to extend a huge thank you to my good friend and colleague and fellow band director JT Tykert for his outstanding teaching and musical instruction with the Wind Symphony in our fellow bands. We would be remiss if we didn't mention that the band was also selected for the other highest honor for high school bands in Illinois, the University of Illinois Superstate Concert Band Festival, where we performed this past Saturday. We earned an invitation for Superstate based on our all-state recording performance. It was, again, a phenomenal performance. Congratulations to all members of the Fremd Wind Symphony. You have truly earned the honor and reputation for being one of the finest bands in the state of Illinois this year. So we'll bring them up by section, and our first section, we have Amanda Alvia, who's a junior flute, joined by Joy and Alvin Alvia. Jiwoo Kang, senior flute, joined by her mother Cindy Kang. Sophia Katzma, senior flute, who's joined by her parents Hidako Amano and Ken Katzma. Ashley Kim, senior flute, joined by parents Ellen and Sean Kim. Sena Kim, a sophomore flautist, joined by Yeji and Justin Kim. Tabitha Mo, who's a junior flautist, joined by her mother Nju Choi. And Senior Hannah Oyasu, joined by her parents Michio and Seiji Oyasu. Next, we have our two oboe players, Alex Bratek, that's joined by his mother Bozana Allison Chen, senior oboe, joined by Amy Wang Chen. For our clarinets, we have Samuel Kang, sophomore clarinettist, joined by Father Sonho Kang. Katerina Kim, who's a senior clarinettist, joined by Lucia and Abe Kim. Matthew Olin, senior clarinettist, joined by Richard Olin. For our low woodwinds, Emily Claire Schlesinger, who's a senior bass clarinettist, joined by her mother Melissa Schlesinger. One of our two bassoonists, Shreya Chamakor, joined by parents Radhi and Raj Chamakor. And Aman Khan, another bassoonist, is joined by his mother Asia Ali. Moving on to our saxophonists, we have Ria Mukherjee, is joined by her parents Sanchita Casper Noack, that is joined by his parents Agnieszka Viosna and Tomasz Noack. Isabel Pulpeter, another saxophonist, joined by parents Juanita and Jim Pulpeter. Thomas Lu, tenor saxophonist, joined by his father Tim Lu. Another saxophonist, Joseph Tater, joined by parents Rose and Paul Tater. And our Barry saxophonist, which is the super-big saxophone that you see, Emily Allen, joined by her parents Katie and Eric. Moving on to our trumpets, we have Griffin Gresho, joined by parents Cheryl and Mark. And then Asha Keener, joined by Rupam Keener. Madison Lammers, senior trumpet, joined by Carla Lammers. Another senior trumpet, Vikram Rao, joined by Shalini and Prasad Rao. Senior trumpet, Rohan Rao, joined by Anil Rao. And our last trumpet here tonight is Kakura Wachi. We're blessed with an incredible horn section of four outstanding horn players. Nive Pishrodi, a senior, who's joined by Sangitha Pishrodi and Vishnu Balarama. Sophomore Elise Schlesinger on French horn, joined by her mother Melissa Schlesinger. Senior French hornist Libby Sutterman. And senior French horn Michael Way, joined by Conan Way and Sunny Liu. Sophomore trombonist Ishan Batra, is joined by parents Rema and Joy Batra. Moving on to our euphoniums, Nashika Gurish, who is a senior, joined by parents Priam and Gurish Sirinbasam. Another outstanding senior euphonium, Joy McMillan. And junior euphonium Kai Petushnik, joined by parents Melanie and Stefan Petushnik. And our last section, the percussion section, Justin Chow. Congratulations, Justin. Ella Jung, that is junior, joined by mother Julia Jung. Sophomore Ye Chan Kim, who's joined by parent Yoo Jin Cheong. Junior Jonathan Krabchuk, joined by his father Michael Krabchuk. And senior percussionist David Koo, that is joined by parents Helen and Joshua Koo. Thank you again very much for the honor and privilege of being able to recognize our outstanding Wind Symphony. Congratulations, Wind Symphony.
Okay, next we'll move on to Palatine High School's journalism. Sean Berleman has been at Palatine High School for 20 years, and in the last 15 years, he's been the advisor of The Cutlass, which is a student news site. Sean recently became a certified journalist educator through the Journalist Education Association. Sean.
Dr. Small, the board, Principal Medina, Assistant Principal Glazer, it's my pleasure to introduce you to these three students who not only are talented, but all of them are leaders for the yearbook and newspaper editors-in-chief, or two future editors-in-chief for next year. I'd like to start off here with Carolyn, Natalie Steiger, who plays third in newspaper Here with their parents Erica and Ray, Marissa Parcham, who plays second in yearbook theme And Monica Jervicious, who plays second in yearbook copywriting.
All right, staying at Palatine High School, Robert Heitz is in his 14th year as a member of the Palatine High School Science Department. This is Robert's 11th season as sponsor of the Science Olympiad team at Palatine High School.
Good evening. I'm thrilled to be back here again with the Palatine High School Science Olympiad team. Joining me is one of our other coaches, Mr. Patrick Brown from the Science Department. I wanted to thank the Board of Education for providing our students with this opportunity to participate in the activity, our superintendent, Dr. Lisa Small, our principal, Mr. Tony Medina, our assistant principal, Mrs. Kim Glazer, our other coaches, Mr. Darius Sanchez and Mr. Alex Larson, and our fellow Science Department members for their continuous support. And of course, our students would like to thank our parents, who are always willing to lend their support. Thank you so much for letting us work with your students. So what is Science Olympiad? It's a competition in which 15 students compete in 23 different events in various disciplines, including biology, chemistry, physics, engineering, and earth and space sciences. This is the 11th time Palatine Science Olympiad has qualified for state in 12 seasons. During the state tournament, we finished eighth in our division and won six medals. Here are the students who won medals at the University of Illinois on April 22nd. Parents, please stand to be recognized when I introduce you. In agricultural sciences, where students demonstrate an understanding of soil chemistry, agrobotany, and design an experiment to test various growing techniques, earning a first-place finish in agricultural science and a new state champion, accompanied by her mother Mary Stupan, we have senior Sophia Stupan. Sophia will be attending Harper College next year, where she plans to begin her studies to one day pursue exotic veterinary medicine. In the forensics event, an event where students are given a scenario and some possible suspects, students perform a series of tests and use these along with other evidence or test results to solve a crime. Earning second place in forensics, accompanied by her mother Margaret Chomac and her father Andre Chomac, we have senior Mary Ann Chomac. Mary Ann will be attending the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign next fall, where she plans to study environmental science. Also earning second place in forensics, accompanied by her mother Mynuen, we have senior Ni Nguyen. Ni will be attending the University of Michigan next year, where she plans to study software engineering. In the write-it-cadet event, one student writes a description of an object, and the other attempts to design it using computer-assisted drafting software, earning a second place in write-it-cadet, accompanied by her mother Halak Desai and her father Nirj Desai, we have sophomore Reva Desai. Also earning a second-place medal in write-it-cadet, accompanied by her mother Rangoli Saxena and her father Alak Saxena, we have sophomore Tanya Saxena. And one of our Olympians earned three medals at state. In the experimental design event, a group of three students design, execute, and report on a scientific experiment based on the materials provided. In the bridge event, students engineer, construct, and test a bridge that tries to hold as much mass as possible while being as light as possible. And in write-it-to-it, one student writes a description of an object and how to build it, and the other student attempts to reconstruct it. Earning a fourth place in experimental design, second place in bridge, and second place in write-it-to-it, accompanied by her mother Basma Youssef, we have senior Miriam Isaac. Miriam will be attending the University of Illinois at Chicago next year, where she plans to study biology. On behalf of the Palatine High School Science Olympiad team, the students, the coaches, and all of our supporters, we thank the Board of Education and Dr. Small for recognizing us tonight. We appreciate the support, the encouragement, and look forward to earning the privilege to be invited back next year.
Okay, and our final student tonight comes from Conan High School, from the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. Conan High School FCCLA sponsor Jackie Brown was unable to attend tonight, so in her place, we have Conan High School Principal Julie Novak.
Good evening. FCCLA, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America is a national student organization that helps students become better leaders in their families, careers, and communities. This organization has given the students of District 211 and Conan High School the opportunity to develop their skills in all areas of family and consumer science content. Through the competitions and various club events, students have had the opportunity to represent themselves, the school, and District 211 as a whole. This year, Conan High School had 12 students compete in apparel construction, culinary arts, and interior design at the regional level, and seven advanced to state competition in Springfield last month. Here are Conan's FCCLA state gold medalist finishers. First, I'd like to introduce junior Mia Pontrelli, along with her parents Pam and Dean. All right. Our culinary pastry arts for Frosted Cake students was the competition that she participated in, and for this competition, can you imagine this, you need to bring all of your supplies and decorate the cake live in front of the judges. So Mia took a gold place with her Captain America birthday cake. We have another student I would like to honor tonight, Olivia Bardo. She needed to work tonight, and I respect her dedication to needing to be at work, but she also took a gold medal for her Avengers birthday cake, so congratulations to Olivia. Next, I'd like to introduce junior Alex Waterman, along with his father Jeff. Alex was an FCCLA state competition gold medal recipient in the category of apparel construction, casual wear. This garment is judged for construction and then modeled. Tonight, Alex is wearing the award-winning cargo pants and bomber jacket. He designed and constructed. Talking to Mia and Alex, they're very grateful to be recognized tonight, and they're very grateful to be done with their AP exams. Very happy for that.
Each year, the Illinois State Board of Education sponsors the Those Who Excel Awards to honored individuals who have made a significant contribution to our public schools throughout the state. Tonight, I am proud to recognize several District 211 individuals and a team who have been honored through their professional contributions, leadership, dedication to our students, and community service. Each Those Who Excel Award recipient will receive a crystal apple, like the one on the corner of the table here. And recipients, when I call your name, please come forward onto the stage to receive your apple from President Klimkowitz. Our first award winner in the category of classroom teacher is Patrick Craig. Patrick is a William Frum High School Special Education teacher. He has been in District 211 for five years. In that short period of time, he's distinguished himself both in and out of the classroom. As a classroom teacher, Patrick has been described by his parent as a tremendous influence on my son's intellectual and social development. A colleague says that Patrick has a driving need to help everyone and is willing to take the steps to make it happen. Congratulations, Patrick, and thank you for all you do within the classroom and District Next, Russell Cummings, administrator from Schaumburg High School. Russ Cummings has been in District 211 as an administrator for 13 years, with most of that time being spent at Schaumburg High School. In that time, he's developed a reputation as a leader who guides through collaboration and inclusion, engaging diverse groups to understand the needs within the building. A parent of multiple Schaumburg graduates admired Russ's ability to make everyone come together. Throughout the school, you will see phrases that say "we are SHS," and clearly, Russell is someone who has demonstrated that to multiple generations of students. Congratulations, Russ, and thank you for all you do for District 211 and Schaumburg Dr. Heidi Davy in the category of classroom teacher. For 23 years, Dr. Heidi Davy has been a staple of the Hoffman Estates English Department. Over the years, she has been described as selfless, measured, joyful, and humble. Heidi has continually delivered what a former student described as "complex, advanced material in an easily digestible way." One parent said Heidi saw areas where her son excelled and helped him to explore those interests, resulting in the student being accepted to college. In addition to having taught nearly every course in the Hoffman Estates English curriculum, Heidi also serves as an advisor to multiple clubs and organizations. Dr. Davy, thank you for your continued passion and dedication. Michael Diaz in the category of educational support personnel. Conan High School Lead Preventive Maintenance Specialist Michael Diaz has spent more than a decade ensuring that Conan students and staff have a safe and comfortable learning environment. He has been described as someone who takes extreme pride in his work. A parent who has attended many athletic, artistic, and other school events has said she has always found evidence in the building that the building is well cared for, and Michael is certainly a part of that component. A staff member added that while overseeing a multitude of building needs, Michael maintains a positive energy that is greatly appreciated as well as contagious. Michael, thank you for all you have done within your work of Conan High School, and Kate Johnson in the category of volunteer. Kate Johnson has been an active member of the Hoffman Estates Hock Boosters for multiple years, serving as vice president and president of the organization. A fellow Booster Club member described Kate as someone who is always coming up with innovative ways to bring recognition to the community, including establishing staff and student appreciation activities. One example was a delightful December drive-through, which allowed students to continue their regular winter showcase during the COVID pandemic. Kate is continuing her work with the club as she coordinates with the school and community to develop the school's 50th anniversary celebration. Thank you, Kate, for all that you have done and given in your time and talent in connecting the school and the community together. Brenda Moreno in the category of classroom teacher. Palatine High School English teacher Brenda Moreno has been known as someone who is always willing to step up to new challenges even before she started with District 211 nearly a decade ago. As someone who has always wanted to be a teacher, Brenda chose to serve in the military as a way to pursue her education and remained in the National Guard even after joining the staff at Palatine High School. Following her discharge, Brenda took on new challenges and enrolled as she was named even as students at Palatine High School. Brenda, thank you for all you have done for Palatine High School and District 211. Cindy Rogers is unable to attend tonight, but I'd like to honor her briefly in the area of educational support personnel. Cindy Rogers has served as an administrative assistant to multiple principals at Palatine High School. When the current principal, Tony Medina, assumed the role, he said Cindy was instrumental in his success. She has been called passionate and understanding when working with both staff and students. Cindy is one of the first people at Palatine High School visitors see when they're in the school and is known to greet everyone with a contagious smile. She has shown her passion for helping others, a willingness to grow professionally, and a drive to provide the best experiences for everyone who enters the school. Congratulations to Cindy, and a thank you to her for her dedication to Palatine High Finally, in the team category, I'd like to honor our District 211 Transportation Department. And before I bring the members up of the team, I'd like to address them together. District 211 understands the importance of safety for our students, and that certainly includes how and who transports our precious cargo to and from school and their events. The Transportation Department dedicates itself to a safe ride, from the drivers and the mechanics to the logistics of all of our routes that need to occur. Not only does District 211 offer bus service to and from school, we offer late buses for our students with practices and club meetings, transportation for field trips, and rides to a countless number of competitions. As I call up different groups from our Transportation Department, please remember, it takes all hands on deck in order to keep our buses operational in District 211. So first, I would like to So first, I would like to call up members of our Administration Center Transportation employees. As I call you, please come on up individually. First, Diana Mikelski, Director of Transportation. Nick Cozen, Assistant to the Director of Transportation. Gary Passifium, Driver Supervisor. Liz Brandon, Secretary to the Director of Transportation. Lynn Privo, Support Staff Assistant. Joyce Oyster, Transportation Clerk. And Betty Wilma, Support Staff Assistant. District 211 operates the largest school-owned fleet of vehicles in the state of Illinois with more than 160 buses. This Herculean undertaking of the transportation team is under the direction of Diane. One of the school administrators noted that students, staff, and parents can rely on the Transportation Department when extenuating circumstances lead students needing a ride home. It is this extra attention to detail, even when we all know they're short-staffed, is what makes this department so special and caring for all of our students. So thank you to each one of you for making that happen. Next, would the supervisors, bus drivers, and the mechanics who are here, please come forward? The Transportation Department has also reduced the district's carbon footprint by pioneering the use of alternative-fueled buses, leading to national news coverage of our district. In recent years, and it continues, our team has took on the challenge of bus driver shortages and worked together to creatively and also putting in extra hours to drive extra routes to make sure our students go to and from school as well as their activities in athletics. As the first person some of our students see every morning and the last person as they close out our school day, our drivers have been described as caring and professional. To our mechanics who are also up here, thank you for working tirelessly to ensure our buses are safe, well-maintained, and reliable. Your collective service to District 211 and our students does not go unnoticed, and I'd like to add that we have many of our mechanics are right now working, as well as many of our drivers are outside running routes right now. Stay there, but thank you. We have an apple for each one of our sites as well as our mechanics, so I'd like to have a representative, as I call you forward, to come forward for that. Will Joe Martinez, Supervisor of the Palatine Office, please come forward to receive the apple on behalf of all the drivers at the Palatine Office? I don't think Pablo is here. Do we have anyone from Conant here? All right, Lynn? Lynn will come up and receive the apple on behalf and present it to our Conant Office bus drivers. I know Sadath is here. Will Sadath, Supervisor of the Schaumburg Office bus drivers, please come forward to receive the award? Patrick Michain is the supervisor of the Hoffman Estates bus drivers, but he is not here, so Gary, will you please come forward to accept that apple? And we have our mechanics. Scott Prescott is the mechanic foreman. Please come forward to accept the reward on behalf, and I know that Mark, Sam, and Carlos are also here, so thank you. The past few years have been a challenge for our Transportation Department and continues to be. I would be remiss if I didn't say at this time, if anyone is interested in becoming a bus driver, please reach out to any one of our phone numbers. We will get you connected to Diana, and we will train you and get you on the road safely and rolling and helping our students along the way. So thank you to everyone and all that you've done in our Transportation Department, as well as all of our Those Who Excel.
Thank you to our students. Your time and talent is so important, and you share it. What you do is tremendous, whether it's in the arts or the academics, representing us at different competitions. That's amazing. So thank you so much for what you do for your own school and for the community. I'd like to thank all of our apple winners, our golden apple winners. Thank you so much. You are extremely humble people because there's others behind you that are doing a lot of the work, and you share it. I know I have the opportunity of going over to the different schools and that, and I can see how well everyone works together, and if there's any concerns, they're brought up and we move forward because we try to do the best for our community and for our students. So thank you so much for all you do, and please pass that along to your staff and everyone else that is involved in the offices. So I thank you so much for everything. And thank you to our teachers for everything that you do to help the students. And we can't forget the parents. You folks are amazing. You take the kids to various events. You make sure that they have what they need. You're supportive of them. Thank you so much for everything that you do for your children and for all of our students here in District 211. So at this time, we're going to continue with our meeting, but we're going to ask all of our recipients to exit up at the back of the stairs, and then they're going to take pictures in the vestibule of our different groups. So we'll take a moment to let everyone leave, and then we're going to continue with our board meeting. All right, thank you. At this time, we will move on in our agenda, and the next item is public comments. The board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful to those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper. At this time, we have five speakers. The first is Jaclyn Freel, followed by Karen Wagner. Jaclyn?
Good evening. My name is Jaclyn Freel, and I have been teaching science to English learners at Palatine High School for the past 15 years. I am here today for my EL students and their parents. These community members moved to the area for all the same reasons as you and me, to raise their kids in a secure community with top-notch schools. District 211, however, is failing to meet the needs of these families by not providing the services they are entitled to. Although there are many issues that need to be addressed, tonight I am going to focus on two: the need for classes taught in the students' native language and the need for the spring tally to include space for move-ins. In recent years, the district has seen a huge influx of EL students. Many of these students arrive not yet knowing enough English to be successful in English-only classes. It is our ethical and state-mandated obligation to provide instruction to these students in their native language. The schools in our district are classified with the state as providing transitional bilingual instruction, but we are not actually providing these services in the buildings. At the very minimum, we must provide native language instruction in the core subjects and any academic classes required by the district for graduation. This includes two years of science, three years of math, and two years of social studies. District 211 took a small step forward this year when Palatine offered a bilingual biology class taught by a Spanish-speaking teacher, but this was only at one school and only in one subject. Additionally, we did not even offer enough sections to fulfill the needs of the students we currently have. This was made apparent when, in March of this year, four EL students who speak very little English were pulled from their bilingual biology class to join my class. I have been unable to communicate with these students directly because I do not speak Spanish, and I must rely on my TA to translate and explain complex ideas to them. One of these students showed up to my class for a few days and then became so frustrated that he has chosen not to return, and truly, who can blame him? In addition to providing native language instruction, we also have an obligation to better prepare for the arrival of new students. This year alone, we had over 100 EL students enroll at Palatine after the start of the school year. Projections show that these numbers are only going to increase in years to come. Instead of properly preparing for the arrival of these students, we continue to max out the number of students in our classes with no room to spare. This forces us to open new classes mid-year, which disrupts our students' schedules over and over again. I have witnessed students crying as their schedules have been changed for the third, fourth, even fifth time this school year in order to make room for the new arrivals that we should have prepared for. And how are we supposed to hire the most qualified teachers and assistants mid-year when most are already working somewhere else? As a district, we make projections for incoming freshmen and fund and plan based on them. We can look at years of projected immigration trends in the same way. So why have we repeatedly failed to do this for the EL students who move in after the first day of school? Other school districts in the Chicagoland area, some with far less resources than District 211, have been providing an extensive array of classes to their students in their native languages. They have prepared for the arrival of new EL students by sectioning classes appropriately. Yet we are not even providing the minimum mandated by the state of Illinois and are upending our students' daily schedules by not preparing for new arrivals. I have spoken with my department chair, my principal, and our superintendent about these concerns, and I welcome the opportunity to continue this conversation. Our district motto is "Extraordinary Opportunities, Innovative Teaching, Exceptional Learning." This needs to apply to all of our students. Thank you.
Karen Wagner, followed by Patty Morosco. Karen Wagner? Karen is first, and then followed by Patty Morosco.
My name is Karen Wagner. I've lived in District 211 for 45 years. My two daughters graduated from Frum High School. I taught at Schaumburg High School for 23 years. I'm devastated over the frequency of shootings in general and in particular in our schools. The recent disaster in Allen, Texas occurred while I was writing this. Many solutions to this carnage are being given. Among those solutions are metal detectors at school entrances, reinforcing classroom doors, providing safe areas for students and staff to hide out, and, to me, the most ridiculous, arming teachers. The most ludicrous answer is to offer thoughts and prayers for the victims. To me, the obvious solution is to lessen the number of guns available for those egregious assaults. Some complain that increased gun control measures would infringe upon the constitutional rights and the Second Amendment. Let's think about these rights. The Constitution was written in the late 1700s. At that time, there was no standing army. The army was designated a well-regulated militia. There were no barracks. The soldiers took their guns home with them. Their weapons were muzzle-loading guns, which required reloading after each time the gun was fired. This could take up to two minutes to accomplish. If guns were prevalent, they took much time to use them. The danger was quite diminished. In some localities today, almost everyone can acquire a handgun or even an automatic weapon. Today's guns are much different from those of the 1700s. Rather than requiring extensive reloading between each use, today's weapons send bullets out in the same way that the water is expelled from a garden hose. Those who cry about their Second Amendment rights are not dealing with reality. They're using this so-called "right" as an excuse to make Americans feel unsafe. Americans now have to worry when they go to a communal meeting, attending church, or watching a parade. Americans need to know that they really care about each other. I worry that a lot of the desire to allow everyone to have a gun is based on dollars. The US firearms industry contributes $51.3 billion to the economy and employs 170,000 people. Does this sound good? What about the cost of caring for victims? What about the cost of law enforcement personnel who must deal with this carnage? Or the emotional cost to victims and their families? What about the activities canceled because of fear? Let's enact common sense gun laws. Automatic weapons should be banned. Detailed licensing should be required to own a weapon. Background checks should be done to make store gun owners be responsible. Weapons in the home should be locked up so six-year-olds don't find a gun and take it to shoot a teacher. Let's be concerned about each other. Let's show we care about those around us. I hope that not being naive to think we all can do this. I have faith in the American people. I hope my faith is not misplaced.
Thank you. Patty Morosco, followed by Mukhan Tewan.
Good evening. I'm Patty Morosco. I'm a teacher here at 211. I have the honor tonight to speak on behalf of Maria Lasso, who couldn't be here but wanted her words to be heard. She and her son arrived here in February, knowing no English. He was in my Spanish-speaking biology class, but along with many other students, was moved in March to an English-speaking biology class. I will read it in Spanish, her own written words first, and then in English. Soy Maria Lasso, la madre de Damian. Quiero que sepan que no todos... Sorry. Que no todos los niños tienen la habilidad de aprendizaje y que es muy difícil salir de nuestros países y de nuestras costumbres en busca de algo mejor. Estos chicos llegan a tratar de adaptarse y estrearse a un nuevo estilo de aprendizaje con un nuevo idioma. Creo que antes de tomar la decisión de mover, los chicos deberían ser evaluados para saber cuál es su nivel de inglés y luego de eso tomar la decisión de hacer ese cambio de clases. Nosotros estamos muy agradecidos por toda la ayuda que hemos encontrado en el colegio y en este país. Solo quiero que tengan en cuenta que las personas que emigramos de nuestros países somos personas de bajos recursos y con muchas ganas e ilusión de salir adelante. Que nos gustaría tener las mismas posibilidades de crecer y aprender, de formar a nuestros hijos profesionales que tengan un futuro diferente a nuestro. That was hers. My name is Maria Lasso. I'd like you to know that not all students have the same opportunity to learn. I want you to know how difficult it is to leave our country, our customs, and our families in search of something better, that these children are trying to adapt to a new That these children are trying to adapt to a new style of learning while learning a new language. That before choosing to move these children to English-speaking classes, that they at least be evaluated on their English level. We are very grateful for all the help that we've received in this school and in this country. I ask that you take into account that we have left our homes, that we have little to our name except big dreams to move forward. That we want to have the same possibilities to grow and learn. That we want our children to be professionals. That they have a future different than our own. Please provide these students with the classes that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mukhan Dewan, followed by Kathy Riesberg.
Good evening. My name is Mukhan Dewan. I stand here today being able to introduce myself as a student of Fremd High School for the very last time. In a couple weeks, I will be graduating Fremd High School, and with that, I conclude my family's three-kid long journey of putting kids through Fremd. Throughout my time, and namely the last year or so, I took it upon myself to speak up about misconduct within the walls of Fremd High School. Not only did this misconduct affect me, but it affected my peers and it affected students dating back years prior, with many of them sharing similar stories regarding the two staff members in question. Although everyone seated before me was made aware of these issues through my past appearances at this podium, some of you I even met with, I was met with little to no action being taken. While I'm not here to relive the actions of certain teachers or the inactions of District two eleven regarding me and my peers specifically, rather, I'm here to urge you to consider a few things the next time a student voices a level of concern. Number one, much like we normally start off public comments with a District two eleven mission statement, as a reminder for what this district stands for, consider the reason why every single person in this room is here. From board member to superintendent or community audience, we're here for the students. So it is a collective and collaborative responsibility to ensure that every student feels heard, and it is in our best practices to remember this every time you speak with a student who has had the courage to speak up. Number two, as stated before, I met with numerous... with a number of board members and district administrators in addition to coming here and speaking. Not only was I the only student this year to come and speak at board meetings consistently, but consider the number of stories and experiences I shared with you, both through the folders I handed you and through my own recounts of experiences I've had. If I alone had the number of stories that I did, of which you heard, think about the sheer number of students who have had similar experiences or know of those stories that you have not heard. I urge you to seek out those voices and make it a point to listen to those who are in your school system every single day. Lastly, please ensure that you continue to support students during their time in high school. As kids, we undergo a massive transformation from day one of our freshman year to the final day of our senior year. And in those four years, school isn't just the place where we learn math, English, or science, but it is a place where we learn how to work with other people, how to form relationships, write proper emails, and so many other skills that are shaping us to be successful. Our students need to be able to trust the people who run this district, to be supportive, to listen to them, and to help them no matter the case. I would like to thank Dr. Small and the current board for their time. I hope that through keeping these three points in mind, this district can move forward and continue to provide high-quality education and opportunities to its students while maintaining accountability, integrity, and open communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Riesberg.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Riesberg. And as a taxpayer for forty-five years in the community, I want to thank all the students, staff, school board, and community members here in District two eleven, who have stood together for the common good and stood united over what we value most, the emotional and physical safety of our children and their ability to navigate the world of the twenty-first century. Day after day and year after year, the majority of us have taken the necessary steps to use our voices and vote in our school board elections and referendums to protect, to provide, and support one of the most important pillars of our democracy, a free, public, and comprehensive education for all students. And it's clear to me, and so many others, that the majority of voices in this community value an education based on the love of learning and the love and respect for all students, not an education based on hate or an education based on an unwarranted fear of our students' learning, the truth of our country's history, their own history, or learning about gender identity or gender preference. Yet for the past several years, your job as board members has been made more difficult by the loud minority of voices, a minority of voices negatively influenced by a constant consumption of disinformation spread by dark-money-funded politicians. These minority voices have often attended our school board meetings here in two eleven with the goal of speaking and promoting an anti-democratic and twisted version of parental rights. This Orwellian anti-democratic version of parental rights does not speak to the importance of a basic parental right and responsibility of all parents to actively partner with their own child's teacher to support their own child's learning. Instead, this anti-democratic version of parental rights attempts to take away the parenting freedoms of the majority of us by calling for the banning of certain books for all students, the denial of any support for our LGBTQ+ community within our schools, and for the censorship of curriculum for all students by urging legislators to pass laws dictating what teachers can and cannot teach and what students can learn. The majority of us know this anti-democratic version of parental rights is simply an intentional effort to bring chaos, bans, and fear into our schools to discourage any reasonable discussion about gun violence prevention. Efforts including raising awareness about domestic violence, locking up weapons, or supporting red flag laws, efforts that actually might mitigate the true danger and the number one cause of deaths for our students, gun violence. However, we, the majority of people, want everyone in two eleven and around our country to know that we share a vision for our community, that from this day forward, our community will always be a welcoming and safe place, where all of us here will continue to support our system of public education, the freedom to parent, and our democracy, to ensure that our children will be prepared for life and for a successful future in the twenty-first century. And if we succeed in achieving this vision, and I'm confident that we will, it will enable all District two eleven stakeholders, students, parents, teachers, school board members, to sit down together for the common good and create an action plan to promote free gun locks as a first step in helping to keep our kids, our families, and our fellow community members safe and free from gun violence and honor everyone's right to live. I want to thank you for all that you do, and I want to wish everyone in this room who are moms and grandmas a Happy Mother's Day. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will be moving on to our strategic plan update on equity. And before we do that, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize our teachers for their passion and what they do. And we've had the Teacher Appreciation Week, so thank you to our staff. It's evident how much you care about the students and what you do to support them. So thank you to all of our teachers. All right. We will move on to our strategic plan update and we'll get organized, and then Dr. Small.
Throughout this year, and as we continue into next year, the board has received information regarding our progress on the strategic plan. Tonight Assistant Superintendent Josh Schumacher and the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, LaShonda Sandifer, will present on the district's progress toward components of the equity goal within the District two eleven strategic plan.
District two eleven is committed to preparing students for their future. We strive to ensure that our students have post-secondary options by building the following skills in each of our future graduates. A focus on academic growth, college and career readiness, student involvement in the school community, global competitive skills, and physical and mental wellness. These skills form the foundation of our District two eleven strategic plan, which outlines the priorities, goals, strategies, and targets to drive innovative progress over a five-year time period. As you know, this plan was developed last year by a steering committee comprised of staff, parents, students, community members, and Board of Education members, and covers ten key priorities with goals and subsequent indicators, strategies, and targets for each priority. I am honored tonight to be here with LaShonda Sandifer, our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. We will present information focused on our progress in strategic plan priority number six, equity. This priority includes the goal statement that District two eleven will increase equity in our schools. Specifically, in this presentation tonight, we will share information regarding our work and our progress towards meeting the 2022-2023 targets for strategy six, three, expand the use of positive behavior supports and restorative practices to address inequities in student disciplinary practices, and six, five, increase the use of culturally relevant materials and culturally responsive teaching practices. The strategy for indicator six point three in our strategic plan is to expand the use of positive behavior supports and restorative practices to address inequities in the student disciplinary process. The two components of this target represent effective proactive and reactive approaches to improving school culture and student behavior. While there are many different definitions of positive behavior supports, the overall concepts include a school-wide systems approach aimed at establishing a positive school culture while also including individualized behavior supports when necessary to ensure a safe and effective learning environment. In short, it focuses on the school as a whole and also on individual students who demonstrate that they need additional support. It's the proactive focus of the target. Restorative practices, the reactive focus, offer an alternative to traditional disciplinary punishments or consequences. Instead, the focus is on resolving conflict, repairing harm, and healing relationships that were affected by a negative behavior. The targets for this indicator include: one, engage staff to analyze current inequities in student disciplinary practices, identify baseline data on inequities; two, research effective strategies related to positive behavior supports, identify strategies that can be integrated with our current school culture and climate; and the third is a reference to our five-year academic goals, decreasing the disproportionate suspensions and referrals by five percent. Tonight, as part of this strategic plan update, we will focus on the first two targets.
Throughout the year, I have had the opportunity to work collaboratively with building and district-level teams as well as working individually with staff. While we don't have time this evening to share with you everything that has been accomplished, I do want to give you some specific examples of impact related to this target. Each of our school buildings has a team of administrators that make up the intervention team. These administrators are charged with responding to student behavior in our schools, but more importantly, they are focused on preventing disruptive behaviors before they happen. As part of my work, I met with each building's intervention team at the six- and twelve-week mark as well as at the end of the semester. These meetings were focused on using student behavior data from this school year and then developing solutions to respond immediately to identified trends. Since positive behavior supports and restorative practices are school-wide approaches, I also work directly with school-based equity teams and our District two eleven equity team to analyze data and recommend potential solutions and next steps. One of the outcomes of these conversations focused directly on the relationship between the student and the staff member. As a district, we continue our focus on increasing our students' sense of belonging in classrooms and schools and the importance of having a trusted adult. However, our data analysis yielded interesting trends on student discipline referrals. One of those trends was the difference between students who were only referred one time compared to those who were referred multiple times. Our interventionists spent time analyzing the interventions that led to more positive outcomes for students. What they realized was that the most effective intervention was a restorative conversation when a student was referred for the first time for a given infraction. We call this the first connection. Our interventionists emphasized through that first connection the identification of the function of a student's behavior and then implemented interventions specific to that student's needs. As a result, they saw a reduction in the number of students who were referred multiple times for the same behavior. This left them with guiding questions about the manner in which staff and students interact when a student engages in undesirable behaviors. How do we facilitate and navigate the conversations when a student has been referred? Is the focus on understanding and teaching, or is the focus on assigning a consequence? This aha moment allowed for a change in mindset and approach for our intervention administrators, and it also allowed for us to focus on what is working. Here is what we know. Students will always make mistakes, but proactive positive supports coupled with a focus on restorative practice minimizes students from repeating negative behaviors because the focus is on learning and changing.
While one of LaShonda's areas of focus was to collaborate directly with building teams and lead data analysis, she also collaborated with other school and district staff to research and identify effective strategies that could be integrated with our current school culture and climate. Tonight, we also want to provide three examples that represent the outcome of this work. The first is a large, systems-based approach. The second is a research-based program aimed at specific behaviors and actions, and the third highlights our efforts to support a fast-growing part of our District two eleven community, our EL students. Multi-tiered systems of support is a district-wide framework that organizes our efforts towards preventing behaviors, providing supports when necessary, and increasing the intensity of that support based on measurable outcomes. We have been working throughout the year to engage District two eleven staff in the development and implementation of MTSS. It has been intense, time-consuming work. However, the most exciting part to me personally is that these efforts focus on increasing both the collaboration between our school staff within buildings and the cohesion of our staff across the district. The increased collaboration and cohesion ultimately makes our efforts towards supporting students at high levels way more effective. MTSS engages all school staff through a tiered approach to academic success, social, emotional health, and behavioral success. Each tier includes universal expectations, supports, and interventions for students, and thresholds by which we determine when students may need additional support. My other favorite thing about MTSS, it's a proactive approach. We don't wait for students to ask for help. We start providing that support sometimes before they even realize they need it. The second, and more specific, research-based strategy that we identified this year is the need for peer mediation programs in our schools. These programs have shown to be an effective way to reduce conflict and disruption in high schools. The process includes utilizing trained students to serve as a neutral third party that guides other students through a conflict resolution process. The goal is to empower both the students in the conflict and the student mediators to better understand each other, clearly communicate their concerns and needs, and ultimately come to a mutual agreement on how to move forward together. Please keep in mind that this intervention is not designed to work for Please keep in mind that this intervention is not designed to work for all conflicts and disruptions that occur in our schools, but we believe it will be an effective tool that empowers students, increases student ownership in school culture and safety, and corresponds to our focus on restorative approaches.
Our English learner or EL population continues to expand and shift within our district. We have welcomed students from varying continents and countries around the world, and because of this, District 211 is experiencing an influx of students who are not only new to the country, but who have varying ranges of school experiences. Our goal is to make sure that EL students have a smooth transition as they become more familiar with the goals, values, and expectations of our district. Based on the data analyzed at the six-week mark, one area of focus for our intervention administrators became the reduction of tardies and truancies for students in the EL program. Our intervention is designed and implemented strategies specific to the needs of our EL students. A few examples include our intervention is facilitating the translation of referral documentation to a student's home language, the inclusion of a trusted adult in student resolution conversations, and a social worker and counselor push into EL classrooms. Two outcomes came as a result of these interventions. The first is a reduction in the number of students who received multiple referrals for attendance. The second, an unplanned outcome, was an increased sense of belonging for students within the EL program.
The strategy for Indicator Six Point Five in our strategic plan is to increase the use of culturally relevant materials and culturally responsive teaching practices. The underlying efforts this school year was to ensure that our staff understands the background and the importance of cultural relevance and cultural responsiveness. While one of these terms focuses on our curriculum and our instructional materials, the other focuses on our interactions with our students. They both center, though, on using students' cultural backgrounds, interests, and lived experiences in all aspects of the teaching and learning process. The targets for this school year include: One, provide professional development to staff on the Illinois Culturally Responsive Teaching and Leading Standards; and Two, identifying curricular materials and methods that can increase the use of culturally relevant materials. The Illinois Culturally Responsive Teaching and Leading Standards provide a framework for both educator preparation programs in the state of Illinois, as well as guidance for currently practicing educators. These standards, which were adopted by the state in March of 2021, support statewide equity and inclusion work by specifically inviting educators to reflect on how their personal convictions and their own backgrounds influence their teaching practices. The standards include a focus on self-awareness and a relationship to others, systems of oppression, students as individuals, students as co-creators, leveraging student advocacy, family and community collaboration, content selections across all curricula, and student representation in the learning environment. Multiple types of professional development experiences were provided to staff this year, but tonight we focus on the discussions held during our winter curriculum committee meetings, during which principals and department chairs engage in conversation about ensuring that all school staff not only understand the standards, but apply the standards in their classrooms, as well as identifying the potential differences in our hiring efforts when pre-service teachers or student teachers, who now engage in different college preparatory coursework, join our staff. Each District 211 school also has a new educator induction program, which spans the first four years of employment in District 211. The staff that lead and facilitate these programs have engaged in conversations this year about the Illinois Culturally Responsive Teaching and Leading Standards, ultimately determining that the foundations of the program included most of the information contained in its standards. The staff then worked to align the program content to the standards, which allowed for the increased alignment of our programs across the district. One change that I would like to highlight for you tonight is the increased programmatic focus on the experience, background, and expertise that our new staff bring into District 211 when they join our staff.
Our District 211 Equity Plan identifies two priorities under equitable curriculum and instruction that further emphasizes the importance of the integration of culturally relevant materials and culturally responsive teaching practices. Priority Number One under equitable curriculum and instruction charges all members of the district with ensuring that all curriculum, curricular materials, supplemental materials, activities, and instructional and grading practices are reflective of our diverse student population. This allows students the opportunity to see themselves reflected in the materials that they interact with throughout the course. Priority Number Two stresses the value of increasing student engagement with culturally responsive instruction that leverages students' existing funds of knowledge and builds their intellectual capacity towards independence. Activating a student's existing knowledge empowers them to use their voice and critically think about the world around them. I had the opportunity to work with several teams throughout the year to assist in the implementation of both our District 211 Equity Plan and our District 211 Strategic Plan. I would like to highlight some of the amazing work that teams in the district have started. The first group I would like to highlight is our district-wide Family and Consumer Sciences Department. During our October Institute Day, I facilitated a professional development opportunity for our entire Family and Consumer Sciences Department. Each professional learning team brought a lesson that was previously taught in their course. They were then challenged to transform lessons to incorporate content, materials, and activities reflective of the diversity represented throughout each classroom, building, and our district as a whole. This included strategies for incorporation of diverse perspectives and student voice and choice. One specific example of this is in one of our culinary courses. One of the units focuses on the incorporation of fruit into a pastry dish. Previously, the unit's culminating activity was the creation of an apple pie. During our time together, our culinary teachers were challenged to think about how to integrate students' cultural experiences into this unit. After some collaboration, they decided the final project would be a great opportunity to bring in student perspective, voice, and choice. The final project now challenges students to create a pastry dish that includes a fruit, but also represents their family, culture, and/or heritage. Our students will then share the significance of the dish with their classmates, giving other students the opportunity to learn more about their classmates and the diversity around them. The second group I would like to highlight is Conant's Media Center. I was invited to meet with this group during a staff meeting in January. Our media centers function as a place for students to feel safe, read, collaborate, research, relax, and interact with their peers. Because the space is unique and set up, it is necessary to ensure that all students and staff feel it is a safe place where they can have their needs met. While meeting with Conant's Media Center, we discussed the current reality of their media center and the function that it serves for the building at large. As a result of our time together, the Media Center team walked away with strategies on culturally responsive teaching practices that tie directly into the structure and function of the Media Center. The final group I would like to highlight is the Framed U.S. History Professional Learning Team. This team was looking to activate students' existing funds of knowledge by giving them the opportunity to facilitate their own learning opportunities. During our time together, we analyzed beginning-of-the-year activities and identified areas that would benefit from the implementation of more student voice. The team then pinpointed avenues where they could use what students already know to help them better understand and connect to the course content. The groups that I highlighted are just three of the many amazing teams that I've worked with who are doing work to increase the use of culturally relevant materials and culturally responsive teaching practices within District 211. It is important to note that these teams were engaged at varying levels at the time and place they needed. The work of diversity, equity, and inclusion cannot be forced. It has to be authentically integrated into the culture of District 211. I will continue to collaborate with staff at any level necessary to ensure that all of our students have access to culturally relevant materials and instruction that is delivered in a manner that meets their needs as a student and as a productive citizen.
For Indicator Six Point Three, expand the use of positive behavior supports and restorative practices to address inequities in the student disciplinary practices. And Indicator Six Point Five, improve the use of culturally relevant materials and culturally responsive teaching practices. We will continue to finalize our efforts towards the 2022-2023 targets and, very soon, transition to the 2023-2024 targets during the summer months. You will receive an update on Indicator Six Point Two and Six Point Four during the annual presentation on the progress towards meeting our academic goals in September. And Indicator Six Point One, increase the percentage of diverse staff members, will also be presented at a future presentation. We want to thank you, and we appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening. If you have questions about our presentation, specifically about our progress towards Six Three and Six Five, we're happy to answer those now. Thank you.
Questions? Ms. Kevell?
Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. So, I've just got a few. When you were speaking about that first intervention conversation, right, towards the beginning of the presentation, my question is, does that apply just across the board to all types of behavioral referrals? Or does the success that your data analysis showed correlate to specific levels of severity of behavior referrals? Is that just an across-the-board success rate where you saw, like, overall positive outcomes and reductions? Or was it about certain severities of behavior referrals, specifically tardiness, et cetera, as opposed to more severe behavior referrals?
So I think one of the separations in that piece was the single referral versus the multiple referral. And so, multiple repeated behaviors typically of the same, as opposed to what I'm... the one-off, right? A significant, major event that occurred that had to be addressed perhaps quickly or in a different way. And so, most of it was more repeated behaviors.
So, my second question, thank you for the answer, is about the peer mediation specifically. And I find this to be really interesting. I know, you know, I've read this research too, and it's very, very interesting. I know that there's some very successful programs in other places. Boston comes to mind in particular, I think is a leader in this. But through my reading, it was my understanding that part of the success of those programs is, of course, consistency, right, and buy-in for students. But the third part is an accountability measure that, you know, when peers are mediating their conflicts and come to some kind of an agreement, like, you know, you're gonna stop Snapchatting my boyfriend, for an example, or whatever, then, you know, there needs to be a follow-up, hopefully by a trusted adult, to make sure that that agreement is stuck to in order for the peer mediation to produce the kind of positive outcomes that we see. And so, that's something that I was wondering about, like, are we in the middle of implementing these programs? Are we looking to do that in the future? Like, where are we at in the process?
Sure. So, we're at the identifying the students to participate in the training. The training has been scheduled for early in the summer. And then identifying, based on the training, the follow-up steps that need to be put in place for the school year. It is not a quick process, as you know.
And so, are we... We're gonna be identifying adults that are willing to help with this process, too?
We have done that, yes.
Okay, that's wonderful. I just wanna make sure we gotta have those adults that are...
The adults are part of our student services and intervention teams, and so there's a joint adult leadership within that.
Excellent. And then my last question. So, you know, you were speaking specifically about, like, truancy, for example, specific to a growing EL population. And when I was at Palatine High School just last week, talking with the teachers there, you know, there was, I believe in the class that I observed, there were supposed to be twenty-two students there, EL students, and there were sixteen. And, you know, it was a Thursday, like, some are absent. And then, you know, the teachers that I spoke to said, "Sometimes kids just kinda choose not to go, and they're kind of wandering around what feels to me like a very big building." So, you know, when we're talking about tardies and reducing that kind of behavior, when I hear things like that from staff members, I wonder about what building-level admin then what kind of supports they're supposed to be providing to try and make sure that at least students in the building are where they're supposed to be.
Sure. So, attendance specifically is a tough one in every high school across the country, I would say. And so, we're addressing that under the MTSS umbrella that I talked about a little earlier, and really trying to systematize that and come up with the thresholds specifically for the district and for the school. And so, for example, our teams are gonna be looking at attendance data and the trend of the past several years and looking at, does District 211 schools match up to what the research says the percentage should be as a student moves along the intervention continuum, or are our schools above or below that? And then, we're also gonna dig into populations like our EL students to say, where did they sit within that? And potentially, that's where the supports and interventions come in. We would identify different levels for EL students to prevent the behavior from occurring because once that behavior starts occurring, it's very difficult to stop. And there's a lot that occurs at that point. So, we're trying to really look at the data in a similar way to what LaShonda's been doing with the teams, just diving down each time into a more smaller and smaller population that we can support.
I know Principal Medina is trying to be very active in this, and, you know, and everybody wants the same thing. At the end of the day, my concern is that, you know, we wanna make sure that the adults that are in our building that are tasked with the enforcement of these, kind of, the meeting of these targets actually have the tools to do their job. And that's my concern. And so, I'm certainly interested in updates as we go along and getting honest answers about whether or not that's the case.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? I do have a couple of them. I really believe in positive adult support. Every young person that we have in our school should have an adult that they can turn to. How are we looking to connect some of our students to a particular adult?
So, one of the things we put in place several years ago, but have really worked to ensure that this happened is the identification of the trusted adult for every student. It's part of our district goals. And I know last year, we were right at the cusp of a hundred percent, maybe just a little less than that. And this year, I'm not gonna give you a preview, but we're right there, too. And so, that's a really important piece that we do early on in the school year. We wanna make sure that students have enough time to build a relationship and identify that person. And so, we usually do it six to eight weeks within the school year because we want that information to be able to use it right away. And that's another piece that we found is the timing on that first referral, right? There's a little bit of a grace period where everyone is happy and, you know, expected behaviors at the beginning, and then some of those referrals start, and then some of the repeats start. So, having that trusted adult in place is key. And then, I would say, within the classroom, our teachers have really focused on the sense of belonging for all students within their classroom and really forming that classroom community so that students feel like they're a part of the school community and in that classroom. And I would say those two things have significantly helped.
Okay. For the students, how are we utilizing the students at each of the schools to maybe help with any concerns that come up? You know, tardies are one of the things. Do we have any students, maybe the principal's advisory group of students, you know? How are they getting involved to help resolve that issue? Because it affects everybody, you know, in the school.
Sure. So, I would say there's... I'll talk to the three biggest ones, which is the Principal's Advisory Committee, which every principal runs. There's the Student Wellness Committee, which doesn't necessarily focus as much on the behavior end. They focus on the more social-emotional end. But then, LaShonda regularly interacts with every school's student equity team. And one of the things that they do within their teams is they're looking at their school's discipline information, but they're also encouraged to bring what they're experiencing, what they're feeling, and what they're seeing, and really what they want out of their schools and what they wanna change. And so, that's been a really nice vehicle to move the student voice forward and really let us hear where they're at and where they're coming from. So, I would say those are the biggest three. There's others, but I think those are enough to answer the question tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation. As far as EL student support, just out of curiosity, and I know we do a lot with trusted adults and social services and teacher collaboration and things like that, has there been any thought or activity around utilizing EL students who have progressed well to mentor or partner with other EL students, especially incoming students, to build those relationships with their peers to help them progress as an EL student?
That's a great idea. I'm gonna write it down and make sure that we do that next year.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Sandifer and Mr. Schumacher, for the presentation and for all the work. And we look forward to more exciting things to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I think...
Madam President, I think to request a brief recess.
Oh, all right. If there's no disagreement, then we'll have a brief recess at 8:59. All right. Thank you. We're going to continue with our presentations, and the next is Cozen-O'Connor Public Strategies update, Dr. Small.
John Dunn is here, and John, as you're coming up, I'll recap what the board has done in terms of some previous action. Cozen-O'Connor Public Strategies was retained in February 21st, 2023 by the Board of Education to provide state relations advice and lobbying services in the relation of the mega-project pilot legislation, related TIF reform, and public school finance impact. Cozen-O'Connor represents the combined interests of districts two-eleven, fifteen, and two-fourteen. Tonight, John F. Dunn is here from Cozen-O'Connor Public Strategies, and will present an update to the Board of Education regarding legislative activity related to the land recently purchased by the Bears Organization, formerly known as the Arlington Park International Racetrack. John?
Good evening. My name is John Dunn. I'm Managing Director at Cozen-O'Connor Public Strategies. We are headquartered in Philadelphia and have offices in several states, including an office in Chicago. We provide lobbying, government affairs services in Illinois, in Springfield, and in Chicago, and throughout the state. We're the largest government affairs firm in the state, bipartisan firm covering a multitude of issues. We have experience in property tax issues and stadium issues and other, and school district issues. So in particular, here, we were retained, as Dr. Small said, to advise on the Bears legislation and also tangentially on TIF reform issues. Before I get to that, I'll just give a real quick overview of what's going on in Springfield. Just very briefly, the session started in January. We're in the spring session now, and it's scheduled to end a week from tomorrow on May 19th. Possible to go over a couple of days, but probably not much beyond that. And I think it's likely at this point that they will end on May 19th. Every year, there's a veto session for the legislature, typically around Thanksgiving, end of October, end of November. So that veto session has not been scheduled yet, but there will be one sometime in October, November. And I'll get to that in a second. In connect, I'll, I'll discuss the legislation, but I just wanted to briefly note that in connection with the legislation, we've had numerous conversations with a number of legislators and staffers. But just to tick through a few key people that we've been talking to since February. Senator Gillespie, who is the sponsor of the Bears legislation, Representative Mark Walker, Representative Mary Beth Canty, leadership in the House, the Illinois House, leadership in the Illinois Senate, a variety of interested legislators and staffers. This legislation has become very, people are very interested in it in Springfield, so we get approached a lot of times by any number of legislators and staffers. Governor's Office, the Illinois Association of School Boards, the Illinois Federation of Teachers, and then last but certainly not least, the Bears. We've had any number of, we've had some formal meetings with the Bears, but we've had any number of informal meetings with them, either in-person, Zoom, or phone calls. So I'll start with the, the TIF reform legislation first, because that's pretty quick. The TIF reform legislation was introduced by Senator Gillespie in February of this year. It's Senate Bill 1391. There was a subject matter hearing on that bill in March. Subject matter meaning no vote, just exploratory subject matter discussion. There were a number of proponents and opponents. Hundred and, 180 witness slips filed in favor of the bill, 285 filed against her TIF reform bill. They break down into two basic categories in, in general. School districts and school-related entities were for the TIF reform bill. Municipalities are not in favor of the TIF reform bill. The bill is long, and it's on hold right now, so I won't go into excruciating detail on the bill. But I would just say, you know, we, the, the three districts, District two-eleven and the other two districts, are in favor of the bill. It puts a number of restrictions on TIFs, most importantly, shortening TIF terms, shortening TIF extensions, no overlapping TIFs. The initial version of the bill allowed for school districts to opt out of the TIF legislation. There have been two amendments filed since the subject matter hearing. As I mentioned at the outset, the legislative session ends in a week, so the bill is essentially on hold right now. We always say nothing ever dies in Springfield, so it's kind of like the walking dead, so nothing's ever truly dead in Springfield. So it, it, it's not going to happen by May 19th, but there's a veto session, and there's next year, so we'll see what happens and what Senator Gillespie's plans are for working on the bill over the summer. The Bears legislation. So the, the initial Bears legislation was introduced by Senator Gillespie in February of this year, right around the time that Cozen was hired. Big piece of legislation, 100 and some pages. For our purposes, for the school district purposes, the key piece is the property tax piece. And that property tax piece, and this was, you know, you've seen in the newspapers, and we've provided updates to the, to District two-eleven and the, and the other districts. But it's essentially a property tax freeze for 40 years, or property tax freeze for up to 40 years, and then a payment in lieu of taxes through an incentive agreement. As the initial bill was drafted, it's an incentive agreement that would be approved by the Village of Arlington Heights. The Village of Arlington Heights and other municipalities have lots of revenue sources. School districts, you know, are kind of stuck with the property tax. So we, the school districts have a big issue with a property tax freeze and being carved out for 40 years and not having a seat at the table on the incentive agreement. A lot of conversations with the Bears. I think we impressed upon them, the need to have a seat at the table. We've made progress with them on the legislative front in getting a seat at the table. That bill was never called for a hearing. There are other issues in the bill that, that have caused that bill, the Bears bill, to be stalled. I, I should also have said at the outset, when we were hired, we were told very expressly, we are not there to defeat the Bears, we are not there to get in a fight with the Bears. We are there to work out and deal with the Bears, because it's in the best interest of the school districts and the community to have the Bears move to Arlington Heights and bring the economic benefits to the, to the entire region. So that's what our, our mission is. There's a second bill that popped up in Springfield that is House Bill 610, sponsored by Representative Marty Moylan. This is a bill that he has been working on, on his, on his own, I would say. It's a variation of the, the initial bill that was introduced by the Bears. And again, on the property tax piece, the good news is, excuse me, the good news is that Representative Moylan's bill explicitly creates a seat at the table for the school districts and gives the school districts approval authority over the incentive agreements, which is what, which is what we want. He also puts a $3.00 tax on Bears tickets, and that money, that $3.00 tax would go to the city of Chicago. And there are other aspects of that bill that don't directly impact us, but may impact the viability of the bill. There's a hearing on the bill on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, in, in Springfield at 10:00 a.m. We'll see, I've talked to the Bears. We'll see how, what their position is on the bill on Tuesday. It's a House bill in the House. That hearing's on Tuesday. The legislature's scheduled to end on Friday. Anything can happen in Springfield, but I don't, I, I think it's unlikely that that bill is going to move or pass by May 19th. But it is a good starting spot for the school districts. That is kind of my overview of, of, you know, what, what we're doing and where the legislation is. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you for, for the presentation and for, for the summary. And we know that you'll keep us informed, and along with, you know, Dr. Small shares the information also with us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. That'll take us to the consent agenda. And does any board member wish to remove an item from the agenda? Okay. There's going to be two motions, two separate motions, because not all board members were present at the April 27th, 2023 regular board meeting. So the first suggested motion is that the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 27, 2023 be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
I'm staying.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The second recommended action is that the minutes of the regular meeting of April 27, 2023 be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right. Thank you. Motion's both passed. All right. The next item on the agenda is our special reports and communication.
Madam President?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I don't believe we took a motion on the consent agenda for items C through G. We only voted on minutes A and B.
No, we voted on the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes. And then we voted on the regular April 27th meeting.
So, Madam President?
Did I miss?
So when you read the motion for item B, you know, as I was following along with you in the document attached to our agenda, that the minutes of the organizational meeting be approved as presented. So I share Mr. Dombrowski's understand, misunderstanding.
Okay. I, I apologize. I thought I said the, the minutes of the regular meeting of the April 27th. Did I pick, well, okay, hold on a second. What did I?
Did we approve the consent agenda in the vote for item A?
Yes, that the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting be approved as presented. That's what I read.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So we're good?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Then that takes us to our special reports and Freedom of Information Act request information. If there's any questions. The next is the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. And congratulations to our business department for the quality performance that they always provide for us. Dr. Small?
That's what I want to do, is acknowledge them. Under the leadership of Chief Operating Officer Lauren Hummel, they've earned the Certificate of Excellence for the 16th year from the School Business Officials International. It's based on our comprehensive annual financial report components and an independent audit. So my thank you to her, her team, and their diligence in terms of what they do, including Barb Peterson, who's here tonight.
Thank you. That takes us to unfinished business, and there is none for this evening. That'll move us to new business. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education enroll in the ASC Self-Injured Program for Health and Dental Benefits for 2023, 2024, for the PPO plans. Remain in the cost-plus-health-and-dental plan for HMO plans and retain Blue Cross and Blue Shield to provide claims administration services for medical, prescription drugs, dental, and utilization review. And further to purchase 125% aggregate stop-loss insurance and specific stop-loss insurance from Blue Cross and Blue Shield at a level of $350,000 for PPO plans and $150,000 for HMO plans as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Discussion. Dr. Small?
District two-eleven currently provides employees and eligible retirees with health and dental benefits through a modified self-insure program known as the Cost-Plus Model. Under the Cost-Plus Model, the costs are based on claim experience, administrative fees per program participant, and stop-loss insurance. The current and proposed multi-plan structure integrates varied cost-control factors for deductibles, coinsurance, prescription drugs, health savings accounts, and varied levels of premiums based on the plan benefits.
Any questions? All right. If there are none, then roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. That takes us to the next item, and that is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of camera systems for 16 vans from Central State's Bus Sales, Inc., in the amount of $42,657.40. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Dr. Small?
The district transportation department maintains 47 vans, of which 16 of those vans that transport students need the addition of the cameras to provide video recordings inside and outside of the vehicle. Tonight's recommendation is to outfit those remaining 16 vans with cameras to be in line with the technology already found in our other vans and buses which transport students within our fleet.
Any questions?
Real quick question. Are we purchasing these from the same vendor that we purchased the other equipment from?
I don't know that specifically, if all of them have been purchased from the same vendor. The vendor that we're purchasing from has outfitted all of our buses. I do not know about all of our vans, though.
Is this a purchase that should or would have gone out for bid?
It's exempt from bidding, but we did receive three quotations from different providers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The motion carries. All right. The next is, the next item is the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve Carolyn Roselli as legal counsel on board hearing and investigation matters as assigned. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Question, for this stage of the policy, we get a recommendation from the hearing officer to decide upon? Is that correct?
You get a recommendation from the hearing officer and the investigator.
Okay. And then if the complaint is not satisfied, there's additional steps beyond the Board of Education? Is that correct?
That is in the policy GAC. There is not in policy IIAA.
Any other questions? All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Motion passes. The next item is that the Board of Education approve a one-year agreement with Curriculum Associates LLC to purchase Elevation at a cost of $42,317.50. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Dr. Small?
The Elevation platform consists of multiple products, including the platform itself and an additional component called Elevation Strategies. Access to both components will provide District two-eleven with the in- Access to both components will provide District 211 with the increased ability to manage EL programming, provide effective instruction to students, and provide staff with unique professional learning opportunities. Specifically, the Strategies component is an online professional learning tool that helps prepare educators to support multilingual learners with actionable data, effective instructional activities, and classroom-based applications.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item is that the superintendent be authorized to offer professional learning opportunities for in-district credit as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Small?
The proposed in-district courses are connected to and seek to move forward the District 211 Strategic Plan, the District 211 Equity Plan, and the District 211 Academic Goals. The courses will be offered beginning this summer.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item is that the Board of Education approve a one-year agreement with Panorama Education at a cost of $124,500. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Small?
We've been using this software for the past two years as a resource to assess and monitor social emotional health. It is brought forth tonight for a one-year renewal and is being funded by the state S.R. grant money.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item is that the Board of Education approve the 2023-2024 Consolidated District Plan to utilize the federal Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, and IDEA grants totaling approximately $3,803,42, as presented and authorized the superintendent to submit the plan as required on behalf of Township High School District 211. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Small?
The details on the agenda include the areas in which the consolidated district plan will be presented to the ISBE for the use of the title grants and IDEA funds as presented. In the report, each grant area has a list of the uses of the projected funding that we will receive in each area for the 23-24 school year.
Any questions? All right, if there are none, then roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item is that the spring curriculum committee report and recommendations be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Small?
The department chairs from each department gathered again for the final round of curriculum meetings with the principals and Assistant Superintendent Josh Schumacher. The recommendations of each committee are presented to you tonight for board approval.
Any questions?
I just want to thank Mr. Schumacher and the department chairs for a couple things. One is presenting us with a draft earlier so that we had time to review and ask questions, and if we so chose to come into the district to see the materials and walk through the curriculum and have phone calls if necessary and things like that in preparation for this evening, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item is that the Board of Education approve the summer curriculum projects at a cost not to exceed the following per grant. Title I, $126,000; Title II, $168,000; and IDEA, $34,000. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Dr. Small?
During the summer, grant money is used to fund curriculum work done by teachers across all subjects. Any recommended curricular changes that are developed in the summer must go through the standard expectations of recommendation at the upcoming school year's curriculum meetings.
Any questions? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is that the Board of Education ratifies the NSSEO amended 2022-2023 annual budget, ratifies the NSSEO proposed 2023-2024 annual budget, and agrees to pay the district's proportionate share of the proposed budget revenues. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Small?
The district has maintained its status as a member in the Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization Cooperative, NSSEO, to meet the unique educational needs of our students who have significant disabilities which exceed the supports available within our District 211 programs. At its April governing board meeting, the NSSEO Board approved the amended budget for the 2022-2023 school year and the proposed 2023-2024 budget for transmittal to the member districts for local board action, which is what is in front of you tonight. The NSSEO proposed annual budget is determined by the combined total cost of services purchased by the eight member districts. Barb Peterson, Controller and Treasurer, and Renee Erickson, Director of Special Education, attend various committee meetings and are direct liaisons with NSSEO along with President Klimkowitz's role as the President of the NSSEO Governing Board.
Any questions? You've received the information, you've got the package of information. We've got 68 students that we're looking to have at Kirk. In the Deaf, Hard, or Hearing Program, we've got two students. We had one the previous year. So it shows what our portion is, and the increase basically is about a 5%, a little bit over 5% increase from the prior budget. Any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item is, the recommended action is that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement to amend the current agreement for reciprocal reporting and cooperation between Township High School District 211 and the Police Department of the Village of Schaumburg, County of Cook, Illinois, to allow camera access to all District 211 facilities via the real-time information center as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Small?
Board Policy JFA Video Surveillance Monitoring authorizes the use of overt camera surveillance, overt video surveillance cameras and monitors on district property, including district-owned vehicles, to promote the health, safety, and welfare of all of our students, staff, and visitors, and to safeguard district facilities and equipment. Current intergovernmental agreements for reciprocal reporting and cooperation between Township High School District 211 and the Hoffman Estates, Palatine, and Schaumburg Police Departments currently allows for police departments to have the necessary software to view real-time images from the district's security cameras in limited viewing situations. What is new is the Police Department of the Village of Schaumburg has established a Real-Time Information Center, RTIC, through the assistance of grant funding that they received from the Cook County Department of Homeland Security. By providing direct access to the district camera management platform allows local law enforcement access to all camera views through the district in this real-time framework. Officers managing this facility at the Schaumburg Police Department can convey immediate and actionable information to responding units in case of an emergency. It is recommended that this intergovernmental agreement be amended to allow for the Schaumburg Police Department to have access to the Cambridge Management System for all facilities owned by the district. This direct police department-to-police department communication in regard to the RTIC camera information system increases information available to all of our three local police departments. It's recommended that this action, this recommended action has already been shared with the Hoffman Estates and Palatine Police Departments, and they are supportive of it, and this amendment is also under review by the Village of Schaumburg.
Questions?
Just a comment, sorry. I just think that is very innovative, and I really appreciate the fact that this is just another example of what we're doing to move forward and trying to keep our kids and staff members safe while conducting business throughout the school.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenbloom?
First of all, I agree. But also, so this is being funded through a grant.
The RTIC system that the Village of Schaumburg has, that is separate from this.
Okay.
We pay for our camera systems.
Okay, and I know that taxpayers pay for the police department and their services. Are we, as a school district, paying anything to the local law enforcement agencies for this service?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have one. Is it possible to be provided with an example of what deter or protect against damage to school district property?
That would be vandalism?
So if one of our students are maybe spray painting something, then our police department would have access to our cameras to then take action?
We would either notify them. It's not, they are not watching constantly. That's not what this is. That's not what our camera system is at all. It is when an incident occurs that they become active in it. So it could be in an emergency situation where they're notified of the situation, whether it's through us, through their own police officers that are on site, that they become viewing it live at that moment. But it is not continuous viewing of our cameras. It is only in the situations that are designated in the agreement.
Any other questions?
I do not have a question, but I do have a comment. First of all, I agree with Mr. Bradley and Mr. Rosenbloom's earlier comments. I think this is an innovative idea. I also appreciate the clearly set boundaries and guidelines put forth in the amendment. My comment is about the way these agreements operate in general, which I do have a problem with, and that is specifically item F in the actual agreement. This agreement shall immediately take effect on the date of its execution and shall be in full force and effect for a period of two years thereafter. This agreement shall automatically renew for successive two-year periods unless terminated pursuant to section G set forth below. I don't have an issue with the service. I'm very proud of what we do. I'm very proud of our police departments and our SROs. I do have an issue with this because to me it translates to a lack of oversight, rather than an automatic agreement that doesn't come before, or the board is an agenda item and is just automatically done. At the very least, I would like to see when this renewal is made, when the renewal is automatically granted, that the board be given a heads up. In my ideal world, this would come before whatever Board of Education is sitting at the moment for renewal, seeming as how, at the end of the day, we're the ones that answer the community for what goes on in our school districts. That would be my preference, and I just, these agreements don't come up very often, so I wanted to seize the opportunity to make my feelings known. However, the amendment specifically that we're voting on tonight, I am in full support of.
Do we normally get an update with the renewal? To Ms. Cavell's point?
No, not that I'm aware of.
But can we do that going forward? Or just a heads up and that it's coming?
It would be information.
Okay, an information item.
Because there are three of these such agreements.
That's correct.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, they all operate the same way.
All right.
Another question I have is, do we know the grant money that the law enforcement agency, that Schaumburg specifically, has received for this center? Do we know how long that is anticipated to last them? That's my first question. My second question is, do we have any, has there been any discussion, or discussion especially between the governmental agencies involved around what happens when the grant money runs out? Who is then, does this stop, or is there some other way that the parties involved will be responsible for the financing of this operation?
I'm not aware of how much money they received or how they spent it. I do not know that they, I do not know how they are funding it or how they're continuing to fund it.
But if it were to change, they would notify us, I would suspect, in some way?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense reimbursement for Michelle Barron to complete the online training for the following courses through the Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB. Open Meetings Act Training, Professional Development Leadership Training, Performance Evaluation Reform Act Training, and Basics of Governance Training. And Stephen Rosenbloom to complete the on-demand webinar, Trauma-Informed Practices for Veterans School Board Members, as submitted. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, if there is none, then roll call, please.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. The motion carries. All right, so the next item is potential topics for future discussion.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was going to say I have one.
Oh, yes. You or me, reference me.
Well, both. All right, I do have one. And my potential topic is board officer elections. All right, two years ago, this board followed the election process that had been established for years. Some confusion occurred, therefore, the goal to transition to the new board this time was to alleviate election confusion by providing each school board member with the suggested process. The process that could address the possibility of three or more names being placed in nomination. The process was shared in March with the board members, then again in April, and in the board agenda listing the script. Board members were asked to share any concerns with Dr. Small or myself, and no one did. Yet there was an awkward point in the election. I would suggest that prior to the next board meeting in April of 2025, that the board discuss the preferred officer election process so that any concerns or process questions can be addressed prior to the election and not come up afterwards. not come up afterwards. So if there's hopefully consensus, maybe this is what we need to discuss, you know, when it comes around to April 25th, right? Twenty, 2025, I should say. Okay?
I'm in agreement.
Okay, thank you. There was, uh, another item that was brought forward, and, uh, it's in regards to board liaisons, and, uh, Mr. Dombrowski, would you like to talk to that?
Yes, I'd like to add to the next agenda. Under New Business, um, our Policy Committee, uh, I don't think that it should be an administrative committee, and I have information here that I'd like to share with the rest of the board members. Grab one for each board member. And, and basically, I think that the function of creating policy is a board responsibility. It's in this month's Journal from the Illinois Association of School Boards. Um, our policies are structured such that the Policy Committee is a board committee. It's under that section of, of policies. Um, to delegate it as an administrative committee with administrative suggestions, um, I think is counter to what that committee should be.
All right. If there's consensus, then we'll bring it back and discuss it at our next board meeting, which is, uh, what is it, the twenty-fifth?
Two weeks.
In two weeks. All right, is, is there consensus to be able to speak about it, then?
I support it.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Cavell?
So we're discussing the information that we were just given, the proposal.
Well, we're, we're gonna talk about the, the Policy Committee, and I'm not exactly certain what, Mr.-
Because this is the, I want time to look at this.
Oh, exactly. That's why I'm saying-
Okay, yeah.
It'll be brought back. We're not gonna discuss it now, but the consensus together.
I, I figured it'd be better to provide my thoughts in writing than try to have a long discussion for New Business.
Thank you.
Yep, all right, that will be perfect. All right, thank you. Is there anything else? I did not hear from anyone else in regards to topics. Okay, if there are none, then our next item is the, uh, Committee Reports. Um, I'll start with NSSEO. We had our board meeting. Um, just for your information, Dr. Hackett was named Superintendent of Distinction uh, by her colleagues in the North, Cook North Region of Illinois, the Illinois Association of School Administrators. So she was honored, one of the individuals that was honored at a luncheon, uh, May third in Springfield. One of the presentations that we had for NSSEO was their Equity Action Plan. They've been working on that. They're looking at, um, they have different groups at each of the schools. They've developed five strands of systemic equity, that they're looking at the systems, uh, teaching and learning, student voice, climate and culture, professional learning, and family and community agency. So they, they've really dug into it and working in regards to that. Um, we had our Shining Star, uh, awards, uh, and those were two young people that received the Infinitec Award Systems, and where they're using the, uh, adapted devices that the, uh, that the young people have. Um, that was, uh, we also talked about the, looking at the facilities. Um, there should be, excuse me, we'll look at the facilities. We have an architectural firm that's taking a look at, uh, what work needs to be done, um, documenting existing conditions, uh, taking a look at, at a variety of things. The Facility Planning Committee, uh, will be meeting probably late in June, um, looking at all of the things that, that need to be done. And we have representatives basically from, uh, from our member districts. Uh, myself will be on it, Julie Jellic, and, um, we would like to have, uh, Mr. Sparks be part of it also to kind of offer a little bit more perspective because NSSEO really does not have a facility manager, so to speak. So I think that will be a wonderful addition to that group. So that's what I have for NSSEO. And that takes us then to EdRed.
Okay, a couple things. Um, last week, there was a, um, EdRed meeting. It was a legislative discussion with Senator Ram Vilevilem, Vil, Vilevilem, Vilevilem, um, who is a, a senator representing, um, primarily the northern suburban area. Um, and he gave us an update on what he's been working on and some other activity going on in Springfield. And, uh, and then there's a virtual legislative roundtable scheduled for May 24th in the evening. Um, I'm glad that it's recorded because I will be at one of our graduation ceremonies that evening and will not be able to attend. So if someone else from the administration staff is able to go, that'd be great, and maybe we can get an update then at our, our next meeting. Otherwise, I will watch the recording and report back as well.
Okay, thank you. That will take us to the Illinois Association of School Boards Report. Mr. Rosenblum?
So a few things here. One is, um, in previous meetings, um, I've asked that if anybody has any suggestions for resolutions for the Delegate Assembly to please let me know, and I have not heard from anyone as of yet, uh, to submit any resolutions from this board. Um, so I can, I will again ask if anybody has any. The deadline for submissions is June 22nd, so we have a couple board meetings between now and then. So again, if anybody has any, anything that they would like added as a resolution suggestion or submission from this board, to please let me know. Um, III Conference Registration is soon upon us. Um, it is, as usual, the weekend before Thanksgiving, uh, a, a great opportunity for networking, learning, and, uh, and sharing of, uh, best practices as a school board from, uh, from, from our perspective, the Illinois Association of School Boards. So, uh, keep an eye out for that, and be sure that if, as a board member, you are interested in participating, that you complete the necessary pre-approval form for your expenses, and let, um, let our executive assistants know for the board that you're interested so that you can get registered to attend. Um, there is, uh, legislation going on in Springfield right now. Senate Bill 990 is what it's called, and I think you all may have gotten an email asking for support in contacting your legislators. Um, I'll read this briefly. Um, Senate Bill 990 mandates that school districts secure two-property appraisals prior to any sale of property, and requires a school district to offer the property to a local municipality at the average price of the appraisals. Um, IASB feels that this completely undermines school districts' authority. Uh, the constraints greatly limit the ability of the school district to fulfill its duty to be fiscally responsible stewards of taxpayer funds by not allowing the district to sell property at its highest potential value. The inequitable legislation targets only school districts, according to IASB. Um, it allows the municipalities to purchase the property at a lower price and then sell the property for a profit, taking possible funds away from the school districts and negatively impacting students and our communities. So, um, this legislation is going to be, um, heard by Executive Committee on May 16th in the morning in Springfield. So if you are so inclined, um, IASB is recommending that, uh, people in the community and board members contact our legislators, asking them, uh, giving our opinions and asking them not to support this legislation as it moves forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of, of this legislation that's coming up?
That is my report.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so we have our list of announcements, our upcoming events, um, graduations, and then our board meeting on May 25th at, at 6:30. We'll be back in the boardroom. All right, then that takes us to the next item, and that would be a closed session motion. The reason we have it a second time is if we don't finish all of our business at the, uh, first closed session, we are able to, to go in a second time. And since we do have it listed in our agenda, we have to vote on it. So, uh, since we do not need to really go back into closed session, it would be a no vote, um, when I'm, after I make the motion, when we take the roll call. So the recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, matter pertaining to an individual student, and collective negotiating matter, matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
No.
Ms. Cavell?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Nay.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No. Motion fails. All right, then that takes, takes us to our last couple of items, and it's the retirement request. The recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement request of Ed, Craig Barron's, effective May 2027, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, Teresa Christensen, effective May 2027, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, Gina Inc., effective May 2027, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, and Kathleen Pepko, effective May 2027, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Motion passes. Next, our administrative appointments, that effective July 1st, 2023, Michelle Bremer be appointed as 12-month Assistant Principal at Palatine High School at a gross salary of one hundred and forty thousand. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Next is that effective August 2nd, 2023, Travis Hastings be appointed as 10-month Assistant Principal at Palatine High School at a gross salary of one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Motion carries. That effect, next item is that effective August 2nd, 2023, at a gross salary of one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, Alexis, uh, excuse me, Alex Maramontis be appointed as a full-time dean at Palatine High School until the Illinois State Board of Education posts his principalship endorsement, at which time he will be a 10-month Assistant Principal at Palatine High School. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Motion passes. With no other business than-
Madam President-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before we adjourn, I, I think I realize what happened during the consent agenda. I think that, um, Ms. Barron may have abstained on the consent agenda and voted in favor of the minutes where she was absent. And before we adjourn, um, it, it might be beneficial to verify that vote and, and make sure that, that was what was intended.
From my recollection, uh, my understanding is that even if, uh, that board members who weren't present are able to vote to, to approve meetings from, minutes for meetings in which they weren't present, although if Ms. Barron wished to change, if that's indeed what happened, I'm not sure.
I think that's why I was confused, because Ms. Barron abstained on the first motion, and I, I mistakenly assumed her abstinence was on the, uh, meeting minutes.
To my understanding, Ms. Cavell is right. It, Ms. Barron's couldn't abstain on that one, or she can vote in favor of it, and, um-
Ms. Barron?
What would you like to do?
So I wanted to abstain on the board meeting that I did not attend.
Uh, Mary Sue, can you go back to, uh, the consent? Roll call, please. Do you have that?
Yes, for the first one, you wouldn't-
Can you read the motion first, and then tell us what the roll call was, and then, uh, if we need to change it, we can do it. So can you read the motion, please?
The first one was that the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 27th, 2023 be approved as presented.
So this is the, uh, voting on items B through G. And can you say what the roll call was, please?
Ms. Barron abstained. Mr. Bradley, Ms. Cavell, Mr. Dombrowski, Mr. Rosenblum, and Mrs. Klimkowitz said aye.
Would you like to change that and vote in favor of the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
All right. Do I need to do the, a whole vote again?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, you don't need to do it again. She's just changing her vote.
She's changing her vote.
And then perhaps if we could have the, the second motion read again with the votes that were cast.
Right.
The second motion was that the minutes of the regular meeting of April 27th, 2023 be approved as presented. Ms. Barron, Mr. Bradley, Ms. Cavell, Mr. Dombrowski, Mr. Rosenblum, and Mrs. Klimkowitz all voted aye.
And this is where, uh, Ms. Barron's probably would have abstained because you weren't, you weren't present there.
So the question is, would she like to change her vote?
Correct, yes, to abstain.
Okay, so, and that'll be abstain?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you for catching that. All right, any other business to come before our board? If there is none, then the Board President declares the meeting of the Board of Education adjourned at 9:56 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.